Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Sholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to thank you for your patience. It's that we're starting a little late tonight, just coming from our public meeting. We'd like to begin this, we'd like to welcome those who may be watching on City 56 or some other means this evening. We'd like to begin this meeting with invocation. I will offer that, followed by the pledge of allegiance, as asked, council member Alsop, if you'd give that for us. Those who'd like to join with us in prayer, if you'd please stand. Our dear kind heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet here this evening. We're grateful for our community and for those people who are currently in our community to support and assist us at this time of need. Father, we pray that Thou might bless them, that they'll be safe and protected and washed over. Pray that Thou continue to bless our communities and the resources that we have here. And for the good people that live upon this mountain, Father, we pray that Thou will sustain them and help them and help us to make right choices and decisions this evening as we ponder and deliberate. We're grateful for our country and the freedoms that we enjoy, and pray that we might be able to always be thankful to be a nation, and may we always be blessed. And these things we ask in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our command, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Our first item is call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments are limited to three minutes and need to be addressed to the city council as a whole. Seeing that nobody moved to call to the public, I'll close call to the public and bring it back to our first item tonight. We have special events, presentation of energy rebates for wastewater treatment plant from Arizona Public Service Representative Brian Wallace. And we also have Janet Dean and Jason Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Wallace. I'm with APS, and I am here with Janet Dean, who's our Community Affairs, and Jason Hatch, who's in, who's the section leader for the area, your local rep, to congratulate the city and recognize the city for their efforts in regards to energy efficiency upgrades, in particular Ed Mutter and Bill Cops team in their upgrades at the water treatment facilities. The improvements that they made to the pump control systems have earned the city $59,575. That's money back to you for the work you've done, and hopefully you'll continue to reinvest that in more energy efficiency efforts. Normally, when you see APS, it's a community charity event that we're supporting, or a community event that Janet gets all the fun in, because she gets all the fun in doing, because she's the Community Affairs, or it's Jason Hatch's team working really hard to get the power back on. I rarely get to do this, so I appreciate your time. I wanted to let you know, though, that this is just the first in a long series of rebates that the city has earned. Since 2011, the city has earned 1,400, 148,000 in rebates. They have, through their efforts, saved 156 million kilowatt hours over the lifespan of the equipment improved. That's the equivalent of 4,000 homes for a year worth of energy. They have, they have, you have had, your efforts have saved, will save the city $1.39 million over the life of the equipment that's been improved. And you will have removed 25,654 tons of CO2. So, well done.
Well, great. Well, don't make this a rare occasion, Brian, so often. You're welcome to bring checks like this by any time you'd like.
It won't be that rare by most people's standards, but Janet gets to do this kind of stuff like weekly.
We do have a meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
See if we can be back.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Good to see you.
You mean you can't cash that one?
You can give it a try. Everybody should at least once.
I've tried to cash a lot, so that one'll work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate your time.
Our next item is a presentation of energy-saving audit by Ameresco representative. We're going to have Brett and Travis come on up. I didn't attempt your last name, so.
That's okay. Brett's fine. Do we have this on the screen here? My name's Brett Morozic. This is Travis Pearl. We're both with Ameresco. Our office is based in Tempe, Arizona, and we did a project with you folks, and if I can get this to work. In January of 2012, we did a Esco project, an energy savings project with you, and the project was completed on March 5th of 2013. You are now in the third year of the guarantee period. The guarantee period is actually 15 years, which is the term of the contract, so you will see us up here every year doing an inspection and making sure that your equipment is installed and operating properly. Our inspection this year, which was performed by Travis, was done on March 25th, 2016. Last year, I did the inspection, and I don't, unfortunately, don't recall the date, so you will either see one or both of us maybe up here. Your project had ADCMs, had interior lighting, exterior lighting. We replaced some domestic water heaters. We also replaced the boilers over at the Aquatic Center. There were rooftop units replaced over at the police station. At the wastewater treatment plant, we installed new motors and variable frequency drives. Throughout the city, we installed a computer power management software, and over at your maintenance facility, we installed a nitrogen tire generation system to service the tires on your city vehicles. Your year three savings exceeded $68,000. Our guarantee for this year would have been $65,932, so you've got a surplus over $2,700. Slide here. What I want to point out on this slide is that your lighting program and also the affluent pump upgrades were the main contributors to the surplus savings. And Travis is going to, oh, I also wanted to mention the nitrogen tire fill is, you're saving on, you're not saving on energy, but you're saving on maintenance to your vehicles. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Travis, and he's going to brief you on the inspection that he made. Thank you.
Okay, we're just going to go through the ECGM a little bit. For the lighting retrofit, we installed new lamps, new fixtures, ballasts, and some of the lamps, we were, there were overlighting areas, so we took lamps out and put in reflector kits to keep the lighting levels. We put occupancy sensors in a lot of areas, daylighting controls, vending machine controls to shut off lights and equipment when it's not needed. So, as Brett mentioned, I went on the inspection, and so this is just some notes from what we observed. There was, there were a couple lamps out, appeared to be burned out at the Aquatic Center, the Public Works Office. The cafeteria, I understand, is under renovation, and we noticed that there were, the lights had been taken out, and so they're waiting there, and I'm sure once you're down for renovations, those will be put back in, so we'll make sure to check on that next year, too. And the senior center had, the LED light bulbs had been replaced by incandescent light bulbs. I heard that was partly at the request of some of the patrons. They were complaining about the light levels in there, and so they went back to the incandescent bulbs. But overall, the lights are in great condition. We were pretty thorough with this, and so we found a relatively small amount of issues, and it's saving $24,000.
Right. Also, too, we feel that the replacement of the LED lamps at the senior center will have a huge impact to the overall savings of the project. You know, we would encourage you to put LED technology back in and to maintain the savings at that particular facility. So, but, you know, again, I was, last year, when I did the inspection, everything was in very, very good condition. Your guys are doing a great job of maintaining not only the lighting program, but, but all the other programs.
So, for the exterior lighting, a lot of the same stuff, new lamps, dimmers on motion sensors, so the lights dim when they're not being used. There was, see, at the airport parking lot, the staff reported there was one lamp out that needed to be placed, and that we're getting on that pretty soon. And it looked like some of the exterior lighting fixtures, the low-profile ones, those can gather dust and debris sometimes, and so we recommend just going and shaking them out every now and then, small maintenance. But it all looked really great. Now, for the domestic water heaters, we replaced electric strip water heaters with heat pump water heaters and tank water heaters with demand tankless water heaters. And they were all found to be installed where they should be, working just as they should be, and the staff didn't really have any complaints. At the senior center, they did have, we noticed an addition of an additional tank water heater that will increase the electricity usage a little bit. The tank water heaters are inherently less efficient than the tankless ones, but it's not anything significant. These are still saving you money. At the Aquatic Center, we replaced the boilers. They were in great condition. Staff reported they were working fine. There was a calm light that was on, but the unit seemed to be working fine, and the staff reported no issues at all. At the police station, we replaced the old RTUs that were at the end of their service life with new high-efficiency units. They were all there, all in good condition. The only notable aspect was that we did notice some hail damage on the fins, and that's really out of everyone's control, and that's not going to prohibit them from operating, but we do recommend getting someone up there to comb and straighten out the fins. At the wastewater treatment plant, we put in two new motors and two variable frequency drives to allow the plant to adjust how much effluent was going into the ponds as needed, instead of running at full power, which really reduce electricity consumption and is saving you guys a lot of money, as APS mentioned. Those were all, those were in great condition. The computer power management software is saving you more money than we anticipated. It was initially purchased for 124 desktop units. Last year, it was noted that it was only running on 82 units. This year, we noted it was running on 86 units, but still with that lower number, you're still saving more than anticipated. So, we think if you get all your computers on there, then you'll be saving even more. And the nitrogen gas tire fill, those help, the nitrogen gas tires lose air pressure less quickly than oxygen tires and, or traditional air tires, and so you get longer tire longevity, less maintenance issues, less time refilling the tires. And so those were found to be fine. The staff reported they were working just fine, and so we're, your savings are on track. That's pretty much the results of the inspection. Just wanted to make a note again that they are, all of the, the equipment is really being maintained in a, really in outstanding condition, and so there's just a couple minor issues that we could really focus on to make things better, but it's, on our end, it's great. Does anyone have any questions for?
Councilmember Critten?
This may be a, not sure is your responsibility or not. You mentioned the, inside the swimming pool, there's some of the big lights out.
Yes.
Is that your responsibility?
Those lamps, those lamps are probably, yeah, those lamps are probably replaced under the program, and if I remember correctly, the warranty program for lighting is five years. We'll help you guys get replacements for all that.
Yeah, because you said maybe next year we'll do it.
Oh, no.
But we don't want to leave something out there.
Yeah, make sure that, we'll, we'll get with Jay here in a week or two.
Okay.
And, and make sure that the lighting program is in place and that you're.
Take care of any warranty issues that, that are outstanding, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anything that you found that maybe would be an improvement that we're currently not doing that would be huge?
I think, looking at other RTU or, yeah, rooftop unit, AC units would be a good idea, I think, other than just at the police station. I imagine that there's additional savings at other areas.
Yeah, I would definitely check, we've seen this down in the Phoenix area, in the Valley, with some of the hailstorms, is check the condition of the cooling fins and, you know, have someone come out, and if they're, if they're dented or damaged, have them, usually they just comb them out, and it's actually a nominal, nominal charge to get them back up to the efficiency that the manufacturer published.
I'd also recommend maybe some water conservation measures we can do. Low-flow showerheads, low-flow toilets. I understand maybe water isn't.
Sink aerators.
Yeah, water isn't maybe a big expense, but if you look at it on the, just as an importance, it is important to conserve water, and you might see benefits from there, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Alsop?
Would, maybe Ed can even answer this one. The hot water heater that you're talking about at the senior center, I think there was an issue that we had to try to keep water temperature really high for all the dishwasher and everything else to hit the bacteria and stuff. And maybe that's why we, we had to put that in there. Is, you have any other thing that could work for that, or?
We can check into it.
Yeah.
And we'll see what the operations are over there, and, you know, if, if it's a health concern, you know, that may be the way to address it. Again, you know, the, the addition of that equipment is, is not going to have a huge impact over the overall savings of the project. So, with the, with the extra lighting savings and the extra lighting, or the extra energy savings with the affluent pump, variable frequency drives and new motors, you're definitely exceeding expectations of what this project would deliver.
Are you going to be, you're going to be bringing us a check like APS?
Actually, I believe that the, the APS rebate program was initiated by us, and, and we, I'm fairly certain that individual we had working on it maximized everything that you guys could get.
That's good. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah. Back to the water heater question. When I personally investigated, right or wrong, I was told that the on-demand water heaters with well water and calcium had a relatively short life and didn't justify, you know, having home conversions just because of that, and the cost of them being installed and repeatedly installed over the old-fashioned tank water heater. Would that apply here, or who's paying for the replacement on the tankless water heater when it calcifies out?
Are you guys using untreated well water for all of, for all of like the, those applications?
No idea. What are you talking about, using a water softener, or?
That would probably help or something. I'm not sure about that issue, like, directly.
Well, okay.
Let us look into that. Let us look into it with Jay, and if there's an issue there with, with any kind of buildup, take a look at it and get it straightened out. I'm not familiar with, I haven't, I haven't run across that problem yet with any of our installs of on-demand water heaters yet, so we'll make sure that we, we address it.
Heated as you use it and not stored heated is a real no-brainer to be an energy saver until maybe some other factors come into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Savings that you've given the community over the years.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item is the consent calendar. Any item other than, we're going to pull item G from the consent calendar tonight. And so the items that we have is consideration of renewal of agreement with Mills on Wheels, Sholo Senior Center, the consideration of renewal of the agreement with the Sholo Historical Society, year 2016 to 17. And, yeah. We have the consideration of the renewal of the agreement with the Sholo Chamber of Commerce, a consideration of resolution R 2016-11, adopting an annual policy and prescribing procedures for purchasing from the mayor and any member of the council.
We had it somewhere.
A consideration of approval of list of city-owned vehicles as exempt vehicles from registration requirements, consideration of the approval of substitute assurance for Snow Creek Unit 2, Phase 1, a release of lots, 36 lots from the trust 8676, and then the minutes of the Sholo City Council regular meeting of June 7th, 2016. Look for a motion, councilmember Alsop. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Critten. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor. Any opposed? See that that passed seven to zero. Thank you. Next item, a new business, a consideration of the award of design bill, construction contract for new public safety building. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a rare treat. I'm usually on last, so. In May 2014, the city council approved purchasing approximately two acres of property at 411 East Deuce of Clubs, which included an existing building of approximately 17,000 square feet. Council's intention is to remodel the site for a new public safety complex to provide an enhanced presence along Sholo's Main Street, increase parking and accessibility, especially during inclement weather, and room to allow for future growth. The city paid for the property with cash saved over many years. City's public works operations will be located to this building following the plan.
Safety operations. I know you like public works, you know, but that's public safety operations, okay?
Thank you for the correction. Pay attention.
Good drive, man.
Following the planned renovation, which includes constructing office and public spaces, communications, dispatch center, holding facilities, ADA improvements, including installing exterior and interior finishing, weatherproofing, and site and landscaping improvements. In October 2015, staff solicited statements of qualification, SOQs, for design build firms to design and construct the necessary renovations. The process followed Arizona Revised Statutes Title 34, wherein prospective companies submitted statements of qualifications, which were reviewed and ranked by a selection committee of city staff, a city council representative, licensed and a licensed contractor. After the SOQs were graded, the selection committee held in-person interviews with five shortlisted firms and selected Low Mountain Construction as the most qualified firm. As the design process began, Navajo County expressed an interest in housing some of its detention and patrol operations in the building. The building's design was re-scope to accommodate the county's needs. The county is planning to contribute $900,000 to the project, plus additional considerations that may include renovating other existing buildings. The design build process uses a single contracted entity to perform both design and construction services. This delivery method provides tight budget controls. The first step in the process, pre-construction, is now complete, and the final design has been assigned a guaranteed maximum price. Low Mountain Construction will provide construction services based on the design drawings and specifications that were produced. Upon construction contract approval, the contractor will provide the services needed to deliver a complete turnkey project. The contractor's scope of work and fees are attached as part of this construction contract. Staff recommends awarding the design build services, construction contract for the new public safety building to Low Mountain Construction and for a guaranteed maximum price of $4,685,499. And I'm here for questions.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I don't know if this is exactly the right time to insert this, but, and Bill, I will apologize. I didn't ask you to be prepared for this. I'm thinking you or Mr. Mutter or the mayor off your heads might remember some numbers. This is a big, big number, and I'm thinking it would be good for the public to know all the hours the council and staff looked at building the new building as opposed to remodeling this one and purchasing this one. If I could start off the trend, that we bought this building, if I remember right, I say we, the city, from monies that had been saved up in anticipation of needing a new public safety, not public works, building. And, and, and so that's how we got started on this, and I'm remembering some real, rather large numbers to this old farm boy of the difference in what it would cost us to build an all-new facility about half of this size. Could somebody pick that up? And I'm thinking for the general public's knowledge and review, because I know the people of Sholo well enough, know I'm going to get some calls on this. I'd like a little help answering that, you know? I've already tried individually, one-on-one with several folks, but if it's you or Mr. Mutter feels like he could pick up there, or the mayor, just a little bit.
Well, let's try. We, it's been a couple of years since we talked about this, but my recollection is we save over a couple million, if not more, by remodeling this facility than, as opposed to building a new facility. And Mr. Provost may remember closer on those numbers, but I believe it was in excess of $2 million.
And, but wasn't the new build about half the size of this as well, or way less than this?
Yeah, it would have been less than half. It would, I don't know half, but it would be much smaller than this building, and we got to remember, for this price, we're including some county operations in the building, too.
Right, right. I just, rather than just sit here and, because we've hashed it out and hashed it out, and we've directed staff to seek this project and have it engineered and everything, I'm rather assuming the council's going to approve this motion. But rather than just do it, I'd, I'd like, again, that background for the public's information. I, I just can't get my head wrapped around these government numbers. They're just too big for me. But, you know, anyhow, anybody else have a comment?
Well, I just, you know, on that, Gene, I'll just say on the savings, there was definitely some things there, and I think that was one of the great things as we went through this project. We were very adamant to hold our costs down, and we actually went to another, you know, contractor, another design, because we weren't getting those numbers where they needed to come in to make it happen. But one of the other big things of taking this building is also the location. Having the location of where it's at to have that for our public safety building is prime as far as the location in our community. It also helped take possibly a future-blighted area that, don't know how long that building may have sat vacant or been used for something else, so we hope to be able to do two or three things by this remodel, as well as the location and selection of it, so. That all factors in indirectly to money and dollars for our community.
Thank you.
One other thing I might add is that since we're starting with an existing structure that has good bones, our cost per square foot for the renovations is quite a bit lower. I think we were, at least, or earlier in some of the later cost estimates, we were looking at about $200 a square foot for the office type of, of space, and then about $300 a square foot for the jail space. Being a CMU building, that, that type of construction is pretty secure, so we saved a significant amount, I think, on the, on the. amount, I think, on the jail space, which originally we were looking at 600 plus a square foot.
Councilmember Critten, did you have a comment?
I didn't see it in here that I recall. When is this going to start?
We have requested that the contractor is on-site July 5th, so right after the Fourth of July parade, he will be putting up some temporary fencing and start moving some trucks in to do, to begin the work.
And how long will it take?
Currently, the schedule shows February 1st.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hatch.
I'm ready to make a motion. If there are no questions.
That's fine.
I move to award the design build services, construction contract for the new public safety building to the Low Mountain Construction for a guaranteed maximum price of $4,685,499.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? Councilmember Alsop?
The only thing I really like about this is when they have those words in guaranteed maximum price. I like that. And we finally found somebody that will listen to us and build it for the price that we wanted to build it for. So I like that, and I'm thankful for staff going out and finding the people that will do for that and getting it done for that price. Thank you.
Any other comments? They're going to have to take half a deuce since the Cholo, just the low construction too, when they get them.
Well, we got 59, we got $59,000.
You have no idea how hard it is for me to raise my hand to vote yes on this much money.
You need some help?
I might.
I got you.
I might.
We appreciate it.
If I hold up, I'm going to hold up some food and they will raise his hand.
That'll work.
We appreciate it. All of them in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cup. And thank you to our Mr. Provost and Mr. Shelley for the work that you guys did on that and other staff. It's been great. Next item is consideration award of a purchase of permanent generator for Fawnbrook Water Booster Station. Mr. Hymasaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. February 2014, the city of Cholo completed the 12-inch inner tie project, which included installing approximately 8,000 linear feet of 12-inch PVC water main to connect the then-purchased Pineview Water System, now called Cholo South Distribution Area, to the existing Cholo Water Distribution System. The work also included constructing multiple pressure-reducing valves, or PRVs, and the Fawnbrook Water Booster Station, which enabled the city to move water between the two systems as needed. Now, the normal operation of the city's water system is water passing through the PRVs heading north. However, the Fawnbrook Water Booster Station is available to pump water to the Cholo South Area if production wells are down on response to power outages in that system. Once water is pumped into the Cholo South Distribution Area, this is the highest elevated water pressure zone in our system. Water can be moved to serve any resident in the city or citywide. The location of the Fawnbrook Booster Station was determined by the hydrologues of the two systems, and the 480-volt, three-phase power required to run this booster station is not close to the site and not available. City is currently utilizing a trailer-mounted generator to run the boosters when needed. Funds are available in the water system account to purchase a permanent natural gas generator for the site. The permanent generator is the final piece of the inner tie project and will free up the trailer-mounted generator for use at water production wells or wastewater leak stations in emergency situations. This equipment will be purchased under a national purchasing contract, which allows the public agencies to purchase equipment at lower costs. I have the generator purchase proposal attached, and I am here available for any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have, Shane, is where we're putting this booster, this generator and everything else, are we impeding on anybody's home noise pressure? I didn't see anything in there about that or where it's located. That's, I'm just asking a question.
And this generator does have a noise enclosure around it as well, and we will be, we have to meet our code and check for noise at those homes nearby.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, my understanding this device will only be used in case of some kind of equipment failure up there on that end with the wells keeping that supply bulk tank filled. Have we had need of this since we have purchased that water company?
We've run the boosters a few times in a response of a need of a failure, no, not at this time that I can recall.
More of a test, or what?
Yeah, just to run the boosters, cycle water, keep water fresh in the system, things like that.
You, tank, put this in the dumb question category if you like, because I ask a lot of them, but why not just a sheerly mechanical diesel-driven pump? Why do we need to produce electricity and then produce a pump powered by electricity? Seems like it'd be simpler just to have a booster pump powered by the diesel engine.
We actually looked in a diesel generator as well. The efficient pump system that we needed to move this amount of water, the head, the height that we needed to move it, required this kind of booster assembly, which requires a lot of power, three-phase and pretty significant. I think we did look into some diesel generators as well. Costs were pretty similar. When you have a diesel generator, you also have to have staff and employees to go there and check the fuel levels continuously, things like that. And so we, and there is natural gas 20-foot or 20-feet from this booster. It seemed like a better option to have it just as a turn-on and let it go, not have to continually maintain the diesel and check the fuel in it.
And then, obviously, the same question. If 240 was available, couldn't we put two-stage boosters in and avoid the generator and just use the power that's available?
We met with the power company, NEC, in the area when we were designing the booster assembly, and the closest areas that they had feeds to do anything with this booster station are clear behind Fawnbrook or up by Pet Sense, I believe, in the shopping area up the hill. I believe their estimates to bring that power to this site were in excess of $250,000 or somewhere along those lines. And knowing that this isn't a booster that we need to run every day, we're not trying to keep a pressure elevated, this is just in emergency situations, and kind of one of the reasons why we would need to move the water in that area is a power outage. And so.
Oh, okay. I just think I need to make a clarification, because I thought I heard that it was only for emergency situations, but the reality is in order to, we have the $2 million tank or 2 million gallon tank in the, I'm talking dollars still, in the Cholo South System that will feed the Cholo proper system by gravity. However, in order to move water from the Cholo proper system to that big 2 million gallon tank, we need those boosters, but those booster pumps have to run. Some of the wells, we have a lot of smaller wells up in that system, smaller wells, older wells, so there, I think there is a possibility that we could have enough issues with wells at some point in time where we need to run those pumps to get water up there to serve that Cholo South as well.
Councilmember Critten?
I move to award the purchase of a permanent generator for the Fawnbrook Water Booster Station under National Purchasing Contract NJPA Number 080613-CAT in an amount not to
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Just Mike, one question I have. What do we have for protection of this generator of where it's going to sit? Does it make sense to build a small place that it can be contained within?
I believe there's existing fencing at this site on at least three sides of that. We'd probably go ahead and put front fencing on it in a gate if needed to protect this generator as well.
Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is item 8C, consideration of award of a contract for professional audit services. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In May of this year, staff issued a request for proposals for professional audit services. An RFP was sent to six CPA firms in Arizona. All firms are members of the Organization Government Finance Officers Association of Arizona, and the RFP was also advertised on the city's website. All six firms that were emailed submitted proposals to conduct the annual city audit. After a thorough evaluation, two firms were selected to make a presentation to the selection committee. On the committee, we have the mayor, the city manager, myself, city attorney, and our accounting manager. The two firms that were interviewed and the cost of their services are listed in the table sheet. The firms were Hinton Burdick with an office in Flagstaff and Colby &amp; Powell with an office in Gilbert, Arizona. After evaluating each proposal and conducting interviews, the committee recommends that the city offer a contract to the firm of Hinton Burdick. The committee believes that Hinton Burdick has the ability to conduct the annual audit in a timely and professional manner at a reasonable price. Hinton Burdick has performed the annual audit for the city since fiscal year 2009 and is familiar with the city's systems and processes and the amount of work it takes to complete the audit. Additionally, the committee feels that this firm's extensive municipal auditing experience, combined with its demonstrated technical expertise, make it the best overall candidate to perform the city's audits. The city's standard professional services agreement will be used for these audit services. I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Critten?
From the viewpoint of dollars and cents, Colby &amp; Powell, each year, are bidding a lower price. Are they not as qualified as Hinton and Burdick? Why would we award a contract to the higher-priced audit?
Yeah, that's something we discussed as a committee. There are a number of reasons. Colby &amp; Powell is a good firm, but with Hinton and Burdick, there are a few advantages. One, they have existing larger clients like the city of Cholo. Currently, Colby &amp; Powell's largest client is much smaller than Cholo, so we have a little bit of a concern there. Hinton Burdick's set up with their client balance, they have some counties and tribal businesses that have a different year-end than we do, which allows them to keep a fuller staff year-round and be able to meet our needs a little bit better. We know their quality and inability to respond because of our years' experience working with them, and Hinton Burdick also offers periodic training sessions for staff, and that's something that kind of sets them apart from the other group.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, having said on that committee, too, I also, there was two things that kind of stood out to me with Hinton Burdick. We're looking at changing our software and our financial accounting software. There's two firms that have bid on it. Hinton Burdick is familiar with both of those software applications, so depending on where we go with our software, they're already familiar with it, either way that we choose, whereas Colby &amp; Powell didn't have that experience with one of the software providers. The second thing that also stood out to me is that in their packet, they did, they bid two major assumptions in their audit. When we, when you do audits, you have a lot of federal grants that needed to be audited, and Hinton Burdick had already included those two major audits. One is with the Department of Transportation, and usually we do an audit on something with the airport. Those were already in their pricing. Colby &amp; Powell didn't have that. So to me, that stood out, too, is that their pricing was fair and reasonable with those two assumptions already in the pricing proposal.
Councilmember Kelly?
Clarification on what you're just saying. So I'm thinking what you said was with the other firm, we would get additional fees for auditing those?
Possibly. They didn't have it included in their pricing, so.
So, does anybody remember if that was price broke out with the others?
They did have the pricing for one single audit, but they didn't have pricing for two, and they didn't give us a breakdown on the hours. It was just a total, whereas Hinton Burdick actually broke down the individual pricing.
So I'd be asking you to guess, if we got the change order from the other company, would it exceed the price difference? It'd just be a good guess, right?
Also, sitting on the, it was interesting as well with Hinton Burdick, they've already done our audits over the years, so they have a pretty good idea of the number of hours that it takes, where with the other company, they were assuming approximately 70 or 80 less hours to do the audit in their bid, and so if it took them closer to the other time, it would be a challenge, and when they're challenged, then sometimes quality and service could, could change, you know? So just trying to compare, when you, when you broke everything out, it definitely landed itself to, you know, the, a direction.
Well, and I'd point out, I don't know how much the public can see or check if they get on the internet, but I imagine they can see these numbers. They're percentage-wise, what are they, 5% difference or something?
A little less than 5%. Over the, over the term of five years, it's about $7,000, so about 3.5%.
I didn't want somebody thinking there was an enormous difference.
Yeah.
Although that's an enormous number to me, yeah.
That's not going to run in for that. Any other questions or comments? I'll call for the vote. All of them in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed seven to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item 8D, a public hearing regarding the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, and proposed secondary property tax levy. Am I in the wrong place? No? I'm sorry. So we need to, you know, open this up for a public hearing regarding the final budget, and this time, Justin Johnson, turn the time to you.
Thank you. What we have tonight prepared is a short PowerPoint presentation to review the final budget. You may recall, a couple of weeks ago, we went through a more extensive, detailed presentation for the tentative budget. You'll notice that our final budget number has not changed from that number, so while we do have more of a summary tonight, we do have most of the pertinent information in there, and if anybody has any questions at any point, please stop me and we'll go through those and try to answer them for you. So our final budget for fiscal year 2017, we're looking at $52,362,213. And to give those who have not been involved through the whole process an idea of how our process works, we started in January with workshops. We had a couple of town hall meetings, January and April, and staff spends a lot of time with department heads and down to line-level employees determining what the budget levels need to be. And then in May, we have our draft tentative budget review at a council meeting, and then a couple of weeks ago, we actually adopted Resolution 2016-10 for the tentative budget. And tonight, we're at the final budget adoption for Resolution R 2016-12, and then coming up at our July 19th meeting, we'll have the official adoption of the secondary tax rate for the Streetlight Improvement District. As we meet with the council and staff to put our budget together, these are the goals and priorities. We've looked at these a number of times in the last year or so, and a lot of them have been unchanged because they're important to the council, and we've identified them as, as the key goals and priorities as we put our budget together. Those are preserve and maintain infrastructure, quality of life, community and economic development, organization, and then under focus future, we've got a few items there, recreation as an economic opportunity, quality education, targeted business development, and enhance community quality of life and livability. So getting into the numbers, we've got a chart here that shows our adopted budget and how we've performed against that adopted budget with an actual comparison. You can see for the last number of years, we've always spent less than we've adopted in our budget. Been, we have a conservative budget process. We try to leave room in there for unexpected items. We try to leave room in there for carrying over project money and monies to the next year, so we start out with a fund balance, and we aren't starting out at zero each year. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, but our actual, our estimated actual for this year is just an estimate. As projects close out for the year or come in unfinished, those projects- As projects close out for the year or come in unfinished, those project dollars will push forward to the next year in some cases. So when that number becomes an actual audited number like the other numbers, you'll see that number drop as well. This slide is a pie chart that shows where our funding sources are, or what the origin of our funding sources. We have beginning fund balance at 34%, operating revenues at 52%, transfers, and then other financing sources. And this further breaks down the, where the money comes from as far as all funds operating revenue. You'll see the largest share of that comes in through local taxes, and state shared revenues also large at 13.4%, utility fees at 23.1%, and charges for service at 13.6%. This is expenditures in a pie chart. What we like to highlight for this slide is that we're spending a third of the money coming in on capital projects. So that's infrastructure, that's streets, that's things that the council and staff have identified as priorities and the goals before we even start building the budget. Other areas of expenditure are personnel at 27% and operations at 22%, reserves at 10%, and debt services at 7%. This is a breakdown of personnel by service area, public safety at 33%, utilities at 16%, public works at 14%, community services at 21%, and general government and planning and zoning 13 and 3%. This is a list of our capital projects budgeted for the current, for the upcoming fiscal year. The two items there, we talked about earlier tonight, one of the larger ones with the police, the public safety building, and also with streets and engineering at 3.9 million, and wastewater at 3.9 million, and water at 1.4 million. This is a pie chart with the breakdown of expenditures by service area. And utilities, 29%, community services at 23%, public works at 19, and public safety at 15, and general government and debt service and improvement districts in the smaller categories in that slide. For what's next, final budget adoption tonight in our public hearing for budget, and then our secondary property tax levy on July 19th.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll turn the time to public if anybody wants to come forward and share anything.
I have a question if I can ask.
If you'd like to come forward.
Mayor and council, city staff, my name is William Thomas, live in Cholo, Arizona. My, my question is that last year's budget was 59 million. This year's 52 million, which is 7 million less, somewhere between 12 and 15 percent reduction. Are we really thinking that we're not going to get as much revenue as we did last year? And...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ed.
In, in previous years, we've saved a lot of money for projects like the, and this one probably directly relates to the wastewater treatment plant. We've completed most of that project.
Okay.
So that amount of the budget can be deducted from the budget from last year.
Okay.
And, and it's not that we're decreasing the revenues, we're spending money we have saved up over years.
Okay. So, so what if we get 59 million in revenues?
It'd be a great thing.
Because you've got those other, because, you know, I know the council is, is interested in infrastructure and quality of life. I see an awful lot of non-million dollar projects that could be done for, you know, a lot less money, but...
What we do is if we, if revenues exceed what we've projected, we, we will be budgeting those next year.
Because you can't, you can't spend what you haven't budgeted for.
Correct.
So next year, it might be $60 million?
We don't know.
Well, I, I think the other point, too, Mr. Thomas, is, is basically, we have, when we look at the historical, we've never spent what we have budgeted in, in any given year. We've been five, 10, 15 thou, million less than a budget.
Because there's nobody to do the project.
In case, we hope to continue to have that same fiscal responsibility.
Now, the other, the other issue is, I hope, I hope on this new, on the final budget, we're not going to buy some more of those radar speed things because they don't work. So are we going to add two more that don't work? So we'll have six of them that don't work?
I couldn't tell you if there are new ones in this budget or not by a line item.
They are.
I believe there are.
$2,000.
Hopefully, we can get better ones that work if, if we go in that direction.
Okay.
Anyone else for the public? See, now I'll close this public meeting and, and bring it back to our next item, item eight E., which is, you know, turn the time to Mr. Johnson again.
Yeah, so tonight, Mayor, we would just need a motion accepting Resolution 2016-12 to adopt the final budget.
Comment, Vice Mayor?
No, not a comment, making a motion.
You have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Is there any comment? Mr. Johnson? He's trying to make a motion.
I'll read the motion.
No, I just, I just, just read the amount, at least the amount.
I move to adopt Resolution Number R. 2016-12, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, an amount of 52,360, 52,362,213. I got it, Bill. I went to Cholo High School, I get that.
Yeah, Justin's fighting me.
You have a motion? We have a second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
We wouldn't get those new flashing radar signs if it was 52,000, so...
And at this time, the city council will recess into a special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2016 and 17 for the district. We'll just take a quick break here.
How quick a break?
Done. It's over.
What, are you coming off for candy?
No, it's old stuff.
She's ready.
I have it in, oh, never mind. It's in the library, isn't it? It's because it's somewhere else.
On the total, you know, from the purchase of the...
We're ready to go now.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to call special, the Cholo Bluff Community Facility District Board, special meeting order. By roll call, see that all board members are present. At this time, would like to open this meeting. First item we have, the discussion is item three, which is a public hearing, Resolution Number R. 2016-02, adopting the final budget and setting the tax levy for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. Mr. Justin Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a PowerPoint presentation prepared for the board tonight. Our final budget for the fiscal year 2017 is $285,800 for the Community Facilities District at Cholo Bluff. District was formed by residents in 2005. It's a separate unit of government, separate from the city of Cholo. The debt issued is a responsibility of the districts and is covered by the assessed valuations. The benefit of the debt must be for the district, and we had $2.9 million in debt issued with the call date of 2032. The assessed valuations, this table gives a history of how the assessed valuations have come in since inception in 2010. You can see significant decreases all along the way. We're hoping that this will turn around in the near future, but it has dropped 68% since 2010. We have two separate bond issues. We have the special assessment, and then we have general obligation bond. First, we'll take a look at the assessment for a total of $2,014,000. We have an annual debt service payment of $155,700, and a total, the total for this portion of the budget is $179,300. So the, the total you saw on the first page, the 285,8 includes this one and the general obligation as well. You have 227 parcels, and the development owns 56% of those. And this, in the assessment, we have 205,726 as an unbudgeted reserve. Here's a look at the revenues. We have beginning fund balance of $224,926, and our assessment billing is $154,600. We have principal and interest due in June, and in December, interest only. Moving on to the GO bonds, the portion of the 285,000 is 106,500, and there were two bond issues, one in 2007 and one in 2011. The proposed tax rate will remain the same at $3.55, and we do have a note in the slide that the collection rate there, we're estimating, will not cover the debt service. We have 30 cents of the 3.55 that's set aside for maintenance and operations, and we would need a debt service rate of $7.44 to cover the annual debt service. And we have unbudgeted reserves of 533,934 in the general obligation. And here's a look at our beginning balance and our expected property tax collections at 47,000, and that's a breakdown on the GO bond of 3.25 per 100 of assessed valuation, and in operations, 30 cents per 100 dollars of assessed valuation. That's the final budget number for the CFD.
Any questions, board members? I'll look for questions of the public. See, nobody came forward. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back here to Mr. Johnson.
Yes, we will, we'll need a motion to accept the resolution to adopt the final budget for the Cholo Bluff CFD.
Board Member Kelly?
I have a question yet.
Okay.
With the shortfall, what is the understanding? Where's the difference come from?
The developers made the commitment to cover the difference.
Not to be, hopefully, taken wrong, but a commitment? Is that a verbal statement? Or do we have money on deposit, or something in writing, or what?
In the past few years, the, the board has allowed the reserves. Remember, there's 533,000 in reserve there.
Right.
And we, the boards allowed the reserve to make up that shortfall. This year, the developer made a commitment to make up the shortfall himself. If he does not make it up, then the reserve's going to make it up. But we are still working with the developer in a creative way to satisfy this debt in a different way.
Because it is a percentage small number, I am willing to vote to do that and cover it out of the reserves. That is not to be understood to be covered out of the general fund, monies from the people of Cholo, it's strictly from the reserves on that loan, if you will. If I'm misstating something, somebody, please correct me. But with the understanding that the developer has given a commitment, and we expect him to follow through, him or her, follow through on that commitment, to make up that shortfall so that we do not have to deplete the reserves.
We do not have to deplete the reserves of, I was trying to turn my phone off, I'm sorry. The, the 51,000, they will make it up. If not, we'll spend, we'll take it out of the reserves, but I, we're, we're just making a commitment, we'll work with the developer to get that 51,300, or we're working even on a different way to take care of them.
Thank you. Councilmember, board member Crichton.
One of the questions I've asked every time, and it's for the public, and I'll ask it again. If there is a default, if there is money owed and there's not money available, is the city of Cholo, or the citizens of Cholo, in any way, shape, or form obligated or responsible for this debt?
No.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll look for a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number R. 2016-02, adopting the final budget in the amount of $285,800 and setting the tax rate for fiscal year 2017 at $3.55 per 100 dollars of assessed valuation. I have a motion. We have a second by Councilwoman Kukamas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is consideration of the minutes of the Cholo Bluff Community Facility District Board of June 7th, 2016.
Go move.
We have a motion by Board Member Crichton, second by Board Member Alsop. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Any other business of the Community Facility District? Not I will adjourn the meeting of the Community Facility District Board. At this time, I'll open the, the meeting back of the Cholo City Council meeting here. Our next item we have is summary of current events. Council members, at this time, I'll look to council members for summary events. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want everybody to know that the Farmers Market and Art Walk, I had a meeting at the Main Street, and everything is looking really good this year. This is the fifth year going on, the sixth year. And I had to make sure I'm doing that right. But anyway, everything is doing really great. The number is, is really high for the number of people taking out spaces, and there's a lot of neat art and crafts going there, and a lot of good food. And even, I went to the Farmers Market this last Saturday, and even with everything that's going on with the Cedar Fire and everything, there's still a lot of people that was there, a lot of vendors, and things were still moving around in downtown Cholo. So I want to thank everybody in the Farmers Market and Art Walk that has came out and to get people out, moving around in the city of Cholo during this hard time that we still have fun and people still made some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member? Councilmember Crichton?
I just want to say that I've been attending the, the fire updates each day, and that it is a exciting to, from the viewpoint of listening to and, and observing all of the intricate details that are going into controlling this fire. These ladies and gentlemen that are fighting it, the ones that are giving the guidance to it, they are truly professionals, and I want to thank them from me individually, and I'll speak for the city of Cholo on that, want to thank them for the job that they're doing.
Thank you. Any other council member? Councilmember Kelly?
Well, I'll just tag on to that a little bit. I believe I noticed all of the council and our staff that's here now at that meeting just a few minutes ago now, and they gave a very optimistic report as far as the threat to Cholo proper, although they did not lift the evacuation alert possibility, whatever they called it. But we really need to remember and pray for our neighbors and friends to the south as that fire may, seems to be moving strangely against the wind and south, and, but they're fighting hard, and hopefully, it does not mean Cedar Creek will have to be evacuated. Thank you.
Any other council members?
I'll just give a, a brief report. You know, it's been great to see our, how our city public has basically responded and, you know, done so in an orderly manner, and we just want to... just want to appreciate the citizens that live in this community. It's great, uh, you know, numerous meetings that we've attended with the city manager and, and different council members as well. And I just want you to know that we've had some great support of our, our senators and, as well as our congressperson, and as well as our, our governor. And it's great that they have basically done what they could to expedite, you know, to go to a command. Uh, incident one, within the first day, was, was pretty precedent for this area. It moved pretty quickly. So it's great that we had those resources at that time. Turn the time to our city manager.
Yeah, just follow up, thanking, uh, all the firefighters and the public safety personnel that's taking care of our area in, in this time of this Cedar Fire. We, and the public, we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding and remaining calm during the fire that began last Wednesday. Just for a reminder, for the most up-to-date news about the fire, go, you can go online to three one one info dot net, or NC web, or call three one one. We have links to all those, um, sites on our city website, choloz.gov. And just, as was mentioned, there was a community meeting earlier tonight. That community meeting will be rebroadcast immediately following this meeting. It was shown live, but they'll rebroadcast it immediately following, um, when we close this meeting. Even though the Cholo Regional Airport has become a hell attack base for the fire, the commuter airlines boutique area is still operating on schedule. Just wanted to remind the public of that. The city's slurry sale project is ongoing, but because of the fire, the schedule has been revised. The amended slurry sale schedule will be posted on the city's website, and the, the delay will push the completion of the slur- slurry sale beyond the July fourth date. Regarding the Arizona Department of Transportation slurry sale project on the Deucea Clubs, it's suspended on US sixty, until US sixty's completely reopened. And ADOT has also notified us that the Box Colbert Project on Hooning and Eleventh Street is scheduled to begin sometime after July fifth. We have forty entrants so far registered for the Fourth of July Parade on Monday, July fourth, which starts at nine AM on the Deucea Clubs. Also, our recreations, our, the recreation staff is accepting parade res- registrations until next Wednesday, June twenty-ninth. And this recreation staff's also working on a day of patriotic fun, food, festivals, and musical entertainment for the Freedom Fest. Next Friday, July first, Aquatic Center will be hosting a luau from seven to nine PM. Admission's two dollars and ten dollars per family. Couple other things, because of the fire, the teen night at the pool has been rescheduled to Thursday, July seventh, from seven-thirty to ten PM. And they'll show the movie Jaws to teens eleven to seven, ages eleven to seventeen. General admission will be a dollar fifty. And our recreation staff is also accepting registrations for a mini mud run, scheduled for Saturday, July sixteenth, at ten AM at the City Park Senior Field. The fun run is open to ages two to ten. And just to remind the council and public, this is the last city council meeting of this current fiscal year. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July nineteenth, at seven PM. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, seconds? Scheduling the meetings? I'm just going to say if at all possible, if there's a, a schedule that would fit the safety of our, you know, safety, if there's a chance that the council or the members would like to could go down and, and see any firsthand things at the fire, that that'd be possible, uh, to let us know. Maybe some of us would like to, you know, be able to get a little closer if possible.
I've been close enough.
On that. Okay, any other business tonight? If you know other, I'll adjourn this meeting.